I watch us six o'clock, so we call our session to order. I'll just do a quick review for if anybody has any clarification items or questions for staff or meeting tonight. Dare I say, we should be getting out of the three.
Don't.
All right, guys. Consent agendas, this is our council meeting minutes from June 21st, or any questions or concerns. New business awarding our contract for the NTDS permitting support. Anything on that? Approve over guarantee maximum price proposal. All right, we'll have a report from the city manager, and then we control the rest of their committee and council reports in a more term. With that, this is our government relations meeting. I know several of you served on a committee that for our process that brought on PAC West to be our kind of our government relations firm that we're working with as a city, and this just has an opportunity for us to we tour around in a facility set, tour for a couple of hours leading into this meeting. We went over to our wastewater treatment facility, went over to Rosslyn Lake location, drove over the outfalls, able to kind of point that out to them. Then walked around the community campus a little bit, the old Seeridge, Hunterville, some of those things, and I mentioned a discussion about that.
So that, Jordan, it was going to be weird to be behind you.
I know.
Well, you did a great introduction. I'm just going to head it off to Paul and his team to kind of talk about the happening this year with the legislative session. And then, you know, it's kind of a chance for the dialogue to happen at the council level too, about the things that we're working on. Like the mayor said, just did a tour of some of those facilities, what our priorities are. And then knew their ideas that second one too, and kind of a chance for us to kick off this relationship. And which will be a productive and fruitful relationship in representing the city's interests, so.
Why don't we start with this, since the legislature just finished. I'm Paul Phillips. Ryan and the team that you see here. There's only three of us, there's a lot more than that. But Ryan was going to run through the legislative numbers since we just finished, what the bills were, what the activities were. Phil's going to touch a little bit on the budget, and I'm going to wrap it up, though, what we think, what we coming down the line, and then be ready for whatever kind of questions. But if you have a question while we're going, please feel free to ask.
Thanks, everybody, for having us. I like to go through, we always do this with our presentations post-session, to try to put things in the context for people to know what that legislative session is. So this was a six-month-long session, our long session every odd number of years. This was the first ever virtual session. And so you think, and everybody was saying, we're going to get through fewer bills, there's going to be a much slower process, so that actually wasn't reflected in the numbers that we saw in terms of bills that were introduced and what were the attempts being made. There was 2,500 bills introduced, 2,500. You hear a number getting thrown around about legislative measures, the speaker will throw out a number that's in the 4,000s. That's actually considered all the amendments and everything else that get drafted, take legislative council's time. About 1,000 of them were in the Senate, 1,500 of them in the House. What we saw this session, that was something different than we've seen before, we had 55 committees. 55 committees, that's a lot more than we've ever had in the past. The House, from 19 session to the 21 session, created 10 new committees, just on the House side of things. So what that ended up doing for us was, on any given day, we got 20 or 25 committees that would run anywhere from an hour to two hours. It was, on average, if you looked over the whole session, 30 hours of testimony every single day. And it wasn't uncommon for there to be a day with 40 or 45 hours of testimony. And so even for a, we're considered a big box firm, our people were watching hearings all day long, doing the legislative, legislator meetings, and then going home and watching more hearings, you know, after dinner and whatnot. It was very overwhelming ordeal, but luckily, we have some pretty tight chamber deadlines still. And so we saw a great number of those bills in April die at the Chamber of Order deadline. Do you guys understand how that works? So there's a two deadline, chamber deadline, where you first have to get posted in late March to be on an agenda to move out of the committee by early April. And if you don't hit either of those triggers, about 60% of the bills die at that point in time. And lobbyists, we reside relief, I think a lot of local governments do at that point too, since you have an awful lot of unfunded mandates that die at that deadline. Not enough of them, but a lot.
Do you think that was, how do I say this, poor management? Put so much on the table, they knew that this virtual thing was coming down the road. Everybody knew that it's going to take longer off. Our council meeting was last a lot longer just because of it.
No easy questions with this council, Ryan.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of people kept looking at the crystal ball, see what they want to see out of it. I think that some of it was probably done by design to keep people busy, and keep us busy, and monitoring what's going on. The first step of being able to engage processes to know what's going on. So if we're spending all day long just trying to figure that piece out, then there's a lot, we're on our heels, and there's a lot less, you know, there's a lot less maneuvering they have to do from our work, and I think that.
I felt kind of pushed around a little bit. I tried to attend a couple of those meetings, and they told us that if you're an elected official, stand back. You just want to hear people who are regular, regular folks, and yes, people who are not elected. Just felt like there was a lot of activity or activities.
Well, the other piece that I thought was strange on that is because I tried to testify in two separate hearings. And it seemed to me that you know exactly, because everybody has to register beforehand, so you know exactly how many people want to talk. You know, so it seems like that you could somehow create a session that either gets those people in or gives them a format, instead of, well, here we have two hours, and by the way, you know, 30% of you are never going to get to speak. But we're not going to tell you who those 30% are until the end, you know, so. And that has nothing to do with you guys, that's just like my personal frustration.
Well, I hope you don't feel like you were picked on because everybody actually.
Oh, I guarantee, yes. Yeah, I'm sure, no, not at all.
Confluence of two things coming up. First was this whole virtual session. They had no idea, in their own defense, because nobody had done it before, so that was a really weird kind of conversation going on. Leadership wanting, having a bunch of new members that thought they knew everything there ever was about anything, wanting to be chairs, and they created a lot of committees. What that does is require people to actually know how to run committees and do it. And I'm very telling you, they didn't. And if I were to be critical of leadership in any way, I'd say, I would should have tried to train your chairmen a little bit better on how to manage them. I'm not sure that's mismanagement because of the fact that it was small, virtual, it's just an awkward situation. And then you had citizens, just regular voters, that wanted to participate and were complaining loudly. A lot of them, by the way, were lobbyists, although they just didn't register as obvious, they were advocates. And they were, I'm just a regular person, I should go and testify. Well, that actually got them in front of a lot of elected officials who were actually elected to represent a whole bunch more than these were. So you had a couple of things all happening, and I hope we never have another virtual session.
I would want to say, though, that that is a new thing that I've seen develop this session too, where it was, there, there used to, well, there, and there could still be towns, but there's that, there was the nuance of if the mayor came or a city councilor, you were elected by that committee, thus, that you almost were put at the front of the line. County commissioners were doing the same thing, and this session was very much the opposite, and you were experiencing some. No, yeah, I can imagine, a lot of people were frustrated with that. But as the other thing that was, I think frustrating for a lot of folks, it's just how they were trying to manage the sheer amount of legislation that was coming through the sheets. But trying to also have a plan in place to give organization to it, yet it was definitely a session of whiplashes. Really look into it, we were walking into a session where we are expecting a billion-dollar shortfall, billion dollars more for wildfire recovery. And by mid-session, we're now all of a sudden a billion dollars up, plus billions coming in from the feds. Plus, we find out FEMA is going to fully reimburse, like, it was a complete switch mid-session. And so, but we did see as, if you could group a lot of the legislation and move forward into four categories, they did do a lot of COVID response. And then also tried to focus on the wildfire recovery. There is going to be more legislation, and a lot of rulemaking in the interim on that topic. I know, following Senate bill, I'm going to switch it, it said it's 752, or the wildfire recovery bill, or the governor's proposal that passed at the end. I think there's 28 references in rulemaking where local governments are to be engaged. So it definitely was a session where, I mean, in the past, you saw a policy move out when it was ready, and kind of fully baked sometimes. To this was, let's get it out and deal with it in rulemaking, and so.
Fix it in the second chamber, we heard a lot. And then, once it got to the second chamber, then well, it passed with a strong vote in the chamber of origin, so what's your problem? I served both the House and Senate many, many decades ago. There was a tutorial process you went through. You're a freshman member, without a chair, you may get to be a vice chair. May get to be considered in the task force. So you had a whole bunch of new people, you had super majorities, yeah. Some of the, I think, protocol of how you work legislation. If I would have said to any of my senior senior senator colleagues that, oh, we'll just pass it on, and we'll fix it, they'll fix it in the House. I would have been in for a 15-minute lecture about how that's not the way to make public policy. By the way, I agree with that, it is not the way to do it, but that, it's a scapegoat sort of thing that happened this session. And again, I hope that doesn't come back, but once you get seated with things in, like this virtual session. My concern is, okay, well, we've done our part, we'll send it over to the House or Senate and let them clean it up. Your part is to clean it up. So I'm a really bit of a old-fashioned on that point, but it, it makes a huge difference when you're talking about things that actually affect people's lives, how governments govern. The process needs to be clean, and I don't believe it looks as clean as it. So let's talk before we kind of open this up, what should you expect? We just finished session, we had the political issues, super majorities, people resigning, all this other kind of conduct stuff. The entire focus, I thought, this time was on equity, every word, even whether the bill dealt with something that had anything to do with gender, or whatever it might be. Equity came up, and scratch your head and say, well, how does purchasing pipeline per sewer have anything to do with that? It did, oh, by the way. So you got that over, that was a good exercise. I actually believe it got people thinking about what they should be talking about. But now we're going into what happens in the next of the session. I referenced what it was like decades ago, the big change now, we are an annual session, guys. And there is just no other way to describe this. The team is taking a bit of a breather right now. Now, we're actually figuring out what the veto might be, what bills are going to be signed, what's the rulemaking that's going to start? All geared up towards September. There will be a special session, the 20th, 21st of September. We have a whole bunch of task forces coming in on the 21st, legislative days on September 22nd, 23rd, 24th. And then we have the deadline for redistricting, the 27th. Yeah. I know not, nobody will admit this, but everybody who wants to run again for office is looking at how will their legislative district be impacted by redistricting? It's human nature. I know people criticize them for doing it, you do the same thing if you were in their, their shoes. So let's not point too many fingers. So, but that, it gets to be a political kind of process, and then you're going to have people starting to announce running for statewide office, whatever it might be. So then, we've got a little bit of a breather in October, depending on what happens during the special session and what happens with the redistricting. I've got the election day is the second, we've got legislative forecast coming in November 15th and 17th, and legislative days. So there's going to be activity, there, another task force day, we haven't figured out what it is, but, but November 19th is legislative concepts are due. So, for example, if we had something we wanted to really draft up and introduce, having to do with the new civic center model kind of thing. We have to have it ready to go, if you want to have it in a short session, by November 19th. So it's important as policymakers, you start thinking, okay, I can't wait till January or February session. You need to have the concept introduced and ready to go by the 19th, so, because that's the final deadline. And it should be before that, that's the very last day to do it, that's the point. That is the deadline, so if you missed that one, you know, you can talk amendments, you can talk, and go have lobbyists come in and say, well, he's really not dead. Let me tell you, you set yourself way back. Then in January, again, we have all the task forces reporting, we have legislative concepts coming in January 10th. So we will actually see by that time, all the various bills that are out there, give you a chance to look and get prepared for, okay, got to kill that one, got to try and do this, got to try and do that. Then you got legislative days 11th through the 13th. And then the final legislative drought is on the end of legislative days. So, so that's the 14th, then you go on to session on February 1st. So all these dates mixed up, but November 19th is an absolute drop dead date. If you have a legislative concept you want to produce, it has to be on or hopefully before then. And the fiscal impact, the revenue forecast is going to be important, then those January deadlines will be important. And then we'll write back at it in February. So that's sort of what's the continuum of things that we would be doing for you at this point.
I haven't counted them, even to one bill, but there's 27 rulemaking steps to that. So while these deadlines are all coming from the legislative process, the regulatory process for the rest of the bills is not even defined yet, but will be interwoven and taking place at the same time.
And I did mention the federal infrastructure bill, if that actually does occur. And the second tranche, if that actually did occur, what might happen, and those funds, and then what DAS might, Department of Administrative Services might require for tracking of money through the grant programs and everything else. So this pile is starting to get pretty thick, but the legislative dates are the things that we kind of focus on for now. It's like standing, your days back in the Capitol, remember, there used to be a session, and it would run long, but then it was over, and everyone had time to breathe.
Right.
And.
Not anymore. Well, thank you for that, you know, just to kind of start us off, I guess, the conversation we were all having with Jordan earlier, which is, you know, we have, you know, Sam, our own tri, our own, you know, transit system here, we have Sandy Net with our rural broadband happening. And this huge wastewater facility still, that really is garner kind of our attention and focus, because it's just so massive, you know, for a community our size. But, you know, and then we have a community campus, which is probably the item that gets us the most excited just to talk about and dream about. And we sit at a time now where there's kind of more money, you know, going around than ever before. National infrastructure, you know, all these things that are happening. We just, we want to make sure that we're strategically, you know, going after the funds that are the most available to us. But also, we're not forgetting, you know, about everything else that is going on. For example, we had an earlier conversation about these rec centers, right? A lot of them got funded in the last session, and there may be an opportunity for future stuff. But at what point should we start, as a council, really starting to get that forward to put in front of the legislature, when we've got this other major deal, you know, that we're in front of them all the time on wastewater? So I think that's, you know, kind of conversations we've had, when we went through the RFP, you know, process was, is, you know, you know, you know, you know, but you don't always know what you don't know, you know, and we, and we, I know Jeremy kind of talked about it, we just, we were worried about what we didn't know, you know? And looking for your guidance and help, I don't know if I put that well.
Well done, I think one of the things is we've been focused on the sewer treatment plant, because it's such a big item, like, it's just the dollar amount, it's so massive in our eyes and Sandy. Maybe not Portland, it's just a dollar pocket, the dollar amount, you know? But, you know, how many things can we run and see? We're focused on that, because we didn't want to get to dilute the system with everything from Sandy coming in, we wanted to focus that. I guess, with the expertise and knowledge, knowing that these are kind of different buckets and different types of things, can we be asking for this, and this, and this, and not hinder ourselves from actually doing? You know, whatever, I got that one and that one, so we're not going to help fund the sewer treatment plant, or whatever, maybe, does that make sense?
Is there a scarcity of the dollar?
Well, I, so what we saw this year was, I would say, not the bellwether we should judge it on, just because, based off of, we're not going to have a federal package dump money, and I get that hats in the past. And they almost set themselves up for failure on this session, because they saw this money, and then they put almost like a cattle call out to all legislators, saying, get us your project. Well, they knew they had $2 billion money, and they got $35 billion of requests submitted. So they set themselves up a little bit there, but to your point, I don't think it's bad to have multiple things ready. And the reason I always say that is because not every, not all money is green. I would take as, we were going through these projects, which, by the way, your staff did an amazing job explaining those, you guys are definitely far ahead of some other communities that we've visited with on this. And so, one of the things that was going through my mind is, you know, I've seen traditionally, the last couple sessions with capital construction, that they will take SPWF dollars, and then they will earmark those dollars, and that's one type of bonding, but that could go to your wastewater. But you might have the rec center or the civic center, that would be lottery dollars over here. And those conversations are kept separate, for the most part, because they're separate bills, same people discussing them. But I think you, you just have to find that balance. I would say, once you know the dollar figures, when you need to ask that question, coming into two medium projects, I don't think hinders you at all. Coming in with five big projects, oh, yeah, then I think we might get some pushback, but.
You have the vision, you have the vision and plan. Put together properly, and house system, whatnot, to give them the reason why. Why should we do it? What should we do, does this plan work, does it seem to make sense? Yes, okay, that's like step one, but then why should they do it politically, who's your champion? Who's going to be pushing for, where, what are they doing to, what's the leadership, are they on ways and ends? There are legislators negotiating multiple projects in their district in sessions, take their position properly, have the right plan, and a looking at leadership. Recipe to be followed, it doesn't always work, but there's a recipe to follow that is going to increase your likelihood of these acceptance. And right now, you have the good foundation because you have the paint.
You know, I have already a number in the legislative process that pigs get bad, dogs get slaughtered. So we got to figure out what's different between those two. Because it's an enforcement action, and EDQs involve the EPA on the sewer operation of water. Process gives you the ability to kind of carve that out. We are doing this because we have to do it, it's the right thing to do. And you can look at, I'd say, one or two other items that are top priorities. But those priorities, it's not only the champions that Brian talked about, it's getting them as far along as you can. Because there's a lot of people that come in with, don't even have glossy pictures. Pictures would help, but doing, the farther you could do in the analysis, and there may be some sub-things you have to do on that. You mentioned land use plan, that was a kind of an issue, it's a bane of your existence in the sense of balance. Well, are there some things that you could do within, here's a project? But by the way, legislative, here's what we need to do to give us some flexibility to do some things within that, that can still advance the goals that you want in your land use plan that we adopted back in the mid-'70s. But this is how we kind of update and modernize that process, so that you use one as an umbrella to talk about the other issues. The key is, don't get greedy, but be resolute and go after things with the tenacity, and to the extent that the staff, without spending a full load of money, can kind of package these things and get through the process, the better you're going to be. Again, this session, there was a lot of funding put out there on concept, that I think has a tendency, could be pulled back or clawed back as we go forward. While there may not be federal money, those monies that are clawed back and not spent are going to be spent on something. So that's the way I would look at it.
What's the one, is that 14, 17? Are they going to be clawed back, do you think? Or second, our wastewater facility, I mean.
That was not, I was talking more of these very broad concepts of community centers, and some things that were, you look at them and say, that's interesting. Can anybody tell me what the return on investment, or where you are, have you done any land use planning, have you done any feasibility studies?
Someone wrote a paper, let's get this in and ask for it, and we'll do it that later. It's how I feel, I've been a council a long time, it's happened in the past. And it's a little frustrating, because you see that, but you see other communities who put that package together, who've written that master, who've done that, got all the shovel-ready aspects. What I'm hearing is, you have a more shovel, if you have that shovel ready, get it all, you present it to the legislator, help them walk it through.
The criteria to be considered shovel-ready is different based on which set of dollars you're going for, because there's different groups you have to jump through, if you're trying to get general obligation, bond, or lottery fund.
And I would like to say, I, before working PAC West, I was 10 years at the legislative board for someone on capital construction. Half of those presentations that come forward, they're, they're asking for dollars if those projects don't qualify for it. And it is the LFO, and then you not see it's their obligation to correct them.
Right.
And so, going to what Ryan had just said, going after the right color of money for the right project, that is really important, and so that's what we can help you guys turn.
You mentioned medium-sized projects, what would our amount be?
I spoke in general, I based it off of what the lists are. So if you go into this session, you have a medium-sized project, it's probably going 5 to 10 million. I've seen past where they did smaller, less number of projects, but bigger, bigger amounts. So I base off, you'll start seeing through the first testimonies, where you'll start seeing the numbers that are being thrown out there. I think if I was looking at overarching, you're probably looking at about 10 million, medium-sized project, so.
The other thing that helps you, though, on those numbers, is the numbers of supporters. City council being unanimous going out, but if there were environmental groups, or union groups, or chambers, I didn't think of anybody that you all do what in your day is fine. This is school district, fire, police, you know? He goes in and testifies, it gets people's attention more than bait, why? And it isn't because he's carrying a gun, in a uniform.
Right.
And that, so those are the types of things that can say, that's interesting. But that's only if you work through LFO, and the legislative fiscal office, and, and work that process, so it's a clean bill that can be acted upon when you go through it.
I'll give another example, is that you're, for a pot of money that you require to have a match in place, obviously, if the state gives it to you, you're going to have to take a vote here to match it, to release the funds. So do it in advance, use it as something that shows you building momentum, and local support, and local investment in the project.
So do it ahead, instead of do it afterwards.
Right.
Yeah. But if it doesn't happen, you just.
Become part of the advocacy materials, with how vague and low they are.
Clarify a little bit, I'm curious about how your lobbying efforts kind of line up against, you know, the, I've been listening to legal org in cities, and they've taken positions that, you know, I'm not sure we would necessarily agree with, and so, you know, whether it's on homeless issues or other things like that, like the housing, the planning and stuff. How does that kind of line up with, you know, what they do supposedly for us versus what you can do for us? Those kind of, can those be, you know, on different planes, or?
Yes, those can be, and there's nothing wrong with that. Legal cities, association, counties do a great job. Consider what their job is, they have every member that I have looking for. County's really tougher, because you got Oklahoma, Washington, Madison, and Lane, and Marion, and then a whole bunch more. So it doesn't mean that they're not doing a good job, but they've got to aggregate, what can we get done? But that's why we've seen such a growth in our business, and by cities that are generally not thought of in the past as having obvious government apparent, going out and getting them. Nobody is saying they're doing this because they can't stand what the cities or the counties are doing. But you all have your own specific needs, that are sometimes, at the city's standpoint, what the city of Portland needs is different than Tiger, Sandy, or from the state. I mean, pick your points about that.
They're all overwhelmed by the 2,500 bills and the 55 committees, there's only a half a staffers for the legal cities and the buildings, so try, I just think they're.
In that scenario, where there's a very, very occasion where I think we've seen some crossways, we always take care of those. And now we can come in and visit. And, um, we now, we can come in and visit with you and share, hey, this is the political dynamics here, you know, do you want to submit a letter? Do you want to be in person testifying? Things like that. And that I will always take as a case, case by case, but, um, I think. So.
Especially when it comes to issues like capital, that's beyond what the legal cities.
I wish that might work too.
So how can you help us? Just in any kind of legislative session, there's going to be, things that will be more likely to be funded, more likely to be proved. Just because money comes in at certain types of colors. To help us be prepared to advocate for, talk to our legislative connections and that kind of stuff. You'll make sure that we focus on stuff that will net us a positive return rather than go down some of these rabbit holes where there's no money, no energy, no time for whatever project. But how, how would you prepare us for that? How would you?
The team is pretty blunt. If you come with us and you, if you're asking for us to go after funding that this isn't, this is not going to happen, we're going to tell you, members of the committee, it doesn't do any good. We actually work for you, the city and your constituents. So why waste their time? That's number one. It's got to be realistic. But the reason we finished the presentation with the dates is to start having you guys think about, okay, we do want to do something, in X arena. Well, okay, we know that the drop dead is November 19th. Talk to sponsor before that. We've got to build a coalition in support of it. We've got to vet our issues and make sure that it's a reasonable budgetary capital construction. All those are kind of like a Gantt chart where you have the end date, you work your, your timeline backwards. So you know what you have to do in that process. That, that's probably the biggest help, I think, in addition to eyes and ears, being the arms and legs during the session. Because AOC and LLC can cover all those issues. It's help guiding you through that process. I don't feel that I'm missing anything.
No, I don't think so at all. I think the other thing too is that I've always tried to counsel is that just because, absolutely, the money is the big thing. That's what you're going in there for. That's what you like to walk out with. But that's not always the, um, object, as you would say, maybe that's just not doable that session. Um, I always like to think, we also think outside the box. So we're not just bringing you back the, no, this is not a go, but what are your alternative plan B, plan C? And actually, I was just thinking of a project that we had worked on, um, that was down in Southern Oregon, uh, several sessions ago. Um, we went in, uh, for a capital allocation after talking with these members beforehand, during the interim, things like that. It was pretty apparent that there was some nervousness about the project. This is a new concept. It's in, we're working, we'll fix out. But instead of doing an allocation, what we did is a budget note. And what that forced was while we still kept the focus on this project, it, it forced agencies to have to come together, put all of their resources, resources to, um, this work group to provide answers, timelines, permitting, things like that. So then that next session, we walked in with a budget note stamped by the state agency saying this project's ready to go. So sometimes it's not just walking in and giving them all of that session. It's reading the room of that and say, okay, well, can we, you know, maneuver this a bit to get the state's support through maybe or, or something like that. And, um, it's, I just, it's not always black and white there. Um, and so there are opportunities that I think can shine through on, um, that would be our topic to value that at the moment.
But to your question, I think Ryan's comment earlier where he said, uh, stop the unfunded mandates, that, that, uh, we'll, if we can stop, give them a small portion of it, the return on our investment for Sandy will be huge because this session particularly, the things they would have passed down to, local jurisdictions, not, not just cities, but counties, in some cases metro, fire, whatever, uh, were unbelievable. So sometimes it's stopping things that happen, but it's more valuable than actually getting things to happen.
Well, we've been really successful in, in bringing work back to districts. I mean, we've been really successful in capitalizing back, not, uh, you know, not because we're charming people, but because we plan out well and we build the coalitions where necessary, we meet the deadlines and we understand how to make a compelling argument. I think in the 19 session, we brought, uh, back a little over $20 million to various jurisdictions. This time I think we're a little north of that, uh, in this session. And so this is what we do. We're going to sit down and even explain these timelines and explain creating works plan. That has every week, something else that we're doing that's going to move that ball forward so that when the session comes, you're going to have a coalition, you're going to have an economic analysis, you're going to have all the pieces that you need to make a compelling argument to legislators. And hopefully a champion who's in the right position, close to the leadership and on the right committees to leverage the dollars you need to make these projects reality. And if we aren't able to do it, we aren't going to give up and go away. We're going to force it into a task force or a working to keep the conversation alive. So that we don't ever sort of lose that momentum and can, it's, it's a halt.
So on that, uh, I mean, you guess, you don't have a great depth of where we're at on these projects, but you have, you're on the outside view kind of, right? So knowing the next session coming up, we've talked about some projects may go, some may continue. You're kind of sitting where we were, you know, where would the next move be for us, you know, to start preparing for it? Would you start preparing for a larger wastewater ask in mass with the possible rec center for the long session? Is there, knowing that we're kind of further along with our wastewater, is there a net, we return to that trough again in the short session? I mean, what would, what should we be doing here in the short and long term as a body to kind of give you guys the tools you need to be effective for us?
Well, I think looking at those projects that we, at the minimum, the ones we visited today, I think it doesn't hurt getting them all moving. Now, whether one's going to be a larger capital project than the other, what we could do is just prepare that as, yes, this one might be 20 million and this one's 5 million. But can 20 million be broken into base one by $5 million increments? And worst case scenario, you bring a whole, you, we decide after session gets going that, yeah, that's a, that's a reasonable ask as to the whole thing. But not only does that look good, you're now going to waste it means that for those people like Betsy Johnson or me, they want to know, are there milestones? Do you have site control? Um, there's those buzzwords that they're, that's all going to be built in already. So to your point, I think, looking at where the projects are, and trying to, if they're larger ones, put milestones in. Um, if they're smaller ones, maybe a final number counts, but also just the, and I have a list. Uh, the bare minimum is I will take the LFO forms and if they're asking for it on the LFO form, you better have the answer for it. Some of it's like, what's the percentage of construction versus land acquisition? Those type of basic things.
Does having a childcare element to our rec center project really help push that?
It opens up another pot of funds. So there's another, there's a new set of federal funds that come in for early learning and early workforce center. That if you look at some of these, um, facilities that were funded, they are using that for early childcare in a portion of it. While there's the rec center on the other half and it allows them to mix some COVID ones.
Mayor mentioned, uh, healthcare, or not healthcare, childcare. About equity, you mentioned that equity. Will this next short session be one of those?
In my opinion only, of course, absolutely yes. Uh, in fact, let me take that panel right there. If we were going to go down and present to the legislative chair. I would take her or her.
I'm an old white guy. I know.
I'm sorry, because we're in the same category. It's just not, I, and I'm not being false or phony about it. I think this is a discussion that's going to go over the next five to 10 years and therefore be cognizant of.
What I've kind of been seeing happen here just very recently is all the federal money being pushed out and all. You know, the cost for construction is just coming in double the estimates. So, um, how do you deal with those increased, I mean, I can, if they were to give out a trillion, there's not a trillion worth of contractors available to, you know, implement those projects. So how do you kind of deal, um, with these increased cost estimates coming in bigger than what you planned for when you do all this, this break? Laying out the, you know, the whole project.
Yeah. Sorry to be so simple.
No, I mean, I would always take my estimate and, and double it and stuff, but, but now it's like almost tripling or doubling what it seems like just is in that.
What I've been, uh, well, we've been counseling clients with the grant to capital constructions, have contingency fund that I know maybe sometimes the standard one for small projects is 2% doubled by. Because then, because there is, there is not much sympathy to come back to the state and say, oh, the budget, they're not giving more money. So, um, I would structure that on the front end. Um, anytime you give money, you're going to have to do an agreement with DAS. They'll ask how you're planning to spend it and.
That question is, do you all get involved after lots of local government grants and are you getting recreation program grants and things like that? You all get involved in those kind of localized grant processes so much?
Not as often as we can. You're more likely to see us contact Senator White's office or one of the, help guide that process. But, uh, that, that's maybe where we can help. Now, state agencies, whether the ODA or parks or sometimes the F and W has different, uh, things that they need to check the box. Those are the types of things we can help with too, but it's more on the state level. Okay?
That does just draw the question, uh, answer to your question, Mayor, really, what can you be doing now? Any tracking of any dollars towards these projects? Just start tracking that now so you can say, this was my in time, whether that's staff or the course of planning. Grants, um, that are associated with the bigger project, um, because you're going to be asked that that's now part of the forms that were not part of it two years ago. Yeah. So.
So what about broadband? Broadband, I mean, there's a lot of funds going in towards that. Are there things that we need?
Well, yeah, there's always, I mean, the whole idea was to continue to expand it beyond and keep the cost down. We have a rural, urban, rural divide with its site sand, which is more of a rural area, but we have fiber, the 100% of the homes that want it in Sandy. Unbelievable take rate of 80% take rate, which is up here. But we provide a big service. Problem is you step right outside of that line. They have zero to none service or very, you know, a little of that. So that you're expanding beyond that sort of footprint of that. We were awarded some, grants here about 10, 11 years ago from the feds. Was it the NTIA grant? It was the other one. Keeping my mind, the broadband grant back in the day, um, to help with the rural areas and build some towers and we got that out there. By the time you expand from that now to the core hours, design this done nationwide. So I guess the, the question is, is do you run that conjunction with some of these other places? Cause it's easy to tie in and get to the underserved. Or not served areas.
I, I kind of feel like we need to do a little bit of, you know, revise or update master plan to kind of figure out, you know, are we going to be Placus County's internet, you know, provider? Are we, you know, what, what's our priority and how big are we wanting to go and where's that cost benefit ratio and things like, and a few of those. But I also realized that broadband money, you know, is maybe here soon. So.
Yeah, there's kind of torn between. $25 million or whatever, what I've been hearing that Sandy could get from this conjunction with the county because these, grants, what I know from the federal side of things, and you guys are the experts, so when I'm just off base, is that when we partner with other, uh, government agencies, like a city and a county together, we get the federal money a lot easier, you know, right? Especially since they are the right of ways in that piece of it. Uh, but it comes towards the city and the city gets that, expands on that piece of it. Um, and that's done nationwide or for other people. Did that in Placus County, did the broadband, how much you bought that, plus 10, 11 years ago with the ATI grants from the feds. And so in doing so, that's where we were able to build our community broadband. Those rural areas right on the outside, you know, that, I read them all the time, you know, the type of this grant, that grant. I guess the question becomes is, you know, how, how, I'm assuming some of those things are being funneled right through to the state to hand that back out through the broadband office or it's coming directly from the feds.
There's a, I believe there, there was the first allocation for broadband during the first federal bill, I think that passed. And then there was another one that came and then I think the state just did some bonding towards it too. So I think you're going to see more than $200 million in that. Um, I know the state and the second round from the feds are going to go through business organ, just like you had said. But I, I guess I would be the person, you guys have an opportunity where there's not a lot of folks that have a very functional, that's a whole fiber entity there. And so you should be able to be, um, and these are dollars that it's going to be first come, first served. And you guys are primed and ready. I don't think putting your hat in the ring does any harm.
Well, and then is there money because of the new format of online education, certain online broadband education as well?
There, they put, uh, 200 million or so, and that will run through the Department of Education.
So what if we keep up with the school just?
That's what, that's kind of what I was thinking during this conversation.
So I work for Placus, you see, which is part of a school side of things, I see, but also some of the OPA. There as well. I testified here last year on some stuff. Everyone knows Joe. Anyway, but on this, and then it goes through the Oregon broadband office now, um, and, the guy who ran that, Chris Cameron, he just retired, who was actually on the Sandy get board. Anyways, but so there's a lot of connections with Sandy around broadband in the state to, know how county is able to connect in with the fiber rates. Anyway, it's just, that's what we've been told is if you can connect the two together, you're more apt to get, a grant. And we applied for one and we didn't get it because it was a small amount of money that was allocated out. Like you said, there's, ask for so much, you know, you only have, uh, $10 million and $60 million came in two weeks.
And sometimes I wish they would just fund two or three projects fully rather than, uh, we had 20 projects submitted. So we're going to give everyone a little bit, but not enough to get anybody finished across the finish line. So. No, I know Joe very well. He was about two miles down the road from me, um, over. And then, uh, actually I will follow up on this because, uh, there's a lady by the name of Melissa Drew, get business order. It's going to be tasked on the broadband. So we're working with her on, put on a summon or a wrap-up and, uh, they're going to be the panel. So I will visit with them ahead of time and see if I can work that.
So the other piece of that was the healthcare part of it, um, that is very big during COVID that became instantaneous, going from like 6% to like 90% overnight. With that ball where people could just get on, where you do Zoom with their doctor and after driving, it become very popular in there. And then the other one was precision agriculture, chief doctor, along with that. But we have a lot of that, things that could really help out the community, like it's nursery stocks or precision agriculture is dripping in water to exactly drop you need when you need broadband. So independence and mom, it's been amazing job of bringing those dollars in. So you take multiple things together, right? And say, hey, benefits all these and we're not to get funded. I know that's some of Business Oregon's grades.
You touched on it. You've got the ESD, you've got the county, you've got the school district. You've got a whole series of broader. Even if it's just the county and the city, that, that will leverage a lot more attention than the city government. So the more you can think of these, they're not truly bank shots because each one, but those connectivity, uh, better.
One conversation we had earlier today was about brownfields. Uh, municipalities can go after them now.
The proposals.
There's a proposal.
Proposals out there, the rules that they want to, um, expand the definition of brownfields to include, um, public, empty, public facilities that are abandoned. Or if you're moving from one facility to another, to be able to reclaim that area.
So Cedar Ridge, you were just in a horrific old middle school today.
So, yeah, I don't know.
I know, I know. We're not there yet, but, but we have an old public building there. I'm just big picture, right? Old, old public building there that's been abandoned. I mean, potentially.
That's why they're wanting to do that. They're not utilizing all the funds. And so I think they're trying.
Trying to figure it out there. They're talking about.
Yeah, we have blood in the system.
Our old sewer treatment plant would have been a great example of this because we tried everything from selling it to get it done, to cleaning it up. So I, I see where you're going. We expired it. Now we're, now we're actually trying to make it another place for sewage.
No, I, I know. That was my reaction earlier today too, but I, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure.
Anything else?
Did you guys talk to them about the new water filtration?
We did not.
So there's another project coming too.
Yeah.
Portland water debacle, where we were digging water untreated from that Portland hole run. Portland water debacle, we're gonna be taking water untreated from that Portland full run.
In our normal water comes down to. We look up to pour run water and now, you know, with their treatment, we need to be able to the untreated and treat ourselves.
Long run, it'll be cheaper for us.
Now, you know, I think this is gonna be a good fit. Have you seen their logo at Pac West? Have you seen this? When we got together, I was wearing a mask, uh but Grant goes, where'd you get that mask? You like stole from his office or something?
How does it work politically, I guess, from, we're asking a lot of ass from our community? And you have young junior freshman type representatives in the legislation from our districts and areas like that. I'm assuming they only have so much ass and so much political capital that can be able to do that. There are risks to their political capital for trying to gain too much out of once our city was, you know, they're representing other cities as well, but also just from being regardless of that, just for the other cities too, how does that, how do you guys play that dilemma? Because you know where they are standing politically as they're freshmen, junior, you know, where they sit.
That is a formula that changes by the day. You're hitting right on a thing. That's what the the magic in hiring a firm like ours, that's the stuff we manage every day. Are those relationships, which ones are changing, who we are investing in, who we're recruiting to be our champions? Where we see them positioned now, where we see them going next session? I mean, the number of variables that change hourly.
Well, and then you've got.
What do you think, so do you have a couple minutes? Um I asked them at the hall, I just kind of mentioned that, you know, with this whole like approach of, you know, the state government doing local land use planning for us. And in fact, they, you know, about that a bit, I don't know, so far, but of the idea that, you know, do we have the option of with these things about where, you know, now we have to have duplexes everywhere, now they can ask for uh single family residential sites to be divided up with duplexes, which basically eliminates our our minimum lot size and our single payment residential zoning. What's the option um down the road of trying to get some exceptions built into where where a city like us already have fifty percent, almost fifty percent of our uh land allocated for medium and high density? And we met the need for middle housing, can we get some exceptions put into these bills, you know, in the future? For us to make some exceptions for that. Is that slim and none and slim left town or?
Or Portland, let me maybe ask something too, are we better off taking some of these efforts and fighting that battle within the league? To change their advocacy, or does it make sense to work with you guys sometimes to get some of our viewpoints into this legislation as well? I mean, what what is the best kind of way for us to advocate?
I think that you need to run the trap line on issues before, like we get the question all the time, what are you, when we're good new with a client and say, what do you think the chances of this or that? Well, we haven't asked that question of anybody yet. I I can't just do this and tell you with a good sense. I mean, part of what you pay us to do is you'll go meet with the people who would be in charge of that issue and let them know, is it a, is it a, well, maybe we'll consider under what version are you looking at? How narrowly can we tailor this to this one jurisdiction versus a full existential, you know, battle on state rights versus local government? I don't have it. I think that uh it's a, that's gonna be a bit less, I mean, what you're saying is not something that hasn't been suggested before. And I think that uh people who are in power right now are the ones who pass that. And so while they're still there, I think that there's short term memory in legislature with thirty percent attrition of legislators. And that's pretty common between twenty five and thirty percent every election cycle. So a lot of new fresh ideas and fresh voices come in and um and new opportunities come up when that happens. You're gonna see some old guard of the years we've seen in place for a long time, historically speaking, in both chambers. Move out and a new fresh group come in looking to make their mark.
So in that regard, um this group has a lot of interest in making sure we have the right context. Several of us have already established context with other senators and such, but of how important, how contributed would that be if you did some of that on our own? So for example, courted some of the Thompsons and some of Williamses, or maybe people outside our district, including so.
How far would that help the situation? Or hurt?
Or hurt, yeah.
I mean, I think. I think every outreach you can make is beneficial. It's the degree of benefit, yes, it's the effort that it takes to develop those results. But I think if you don't try, you're setting yourself back. So if you can go to the perpetrators of the world or Chuck or any of the other folks that you have a even a tangential relationship with, that will help our capitalists as to, okay, on this bill, how can we use that person in the most appropriate way to influence the process moving forward? So I think it's all beneficial. I will say to you, however, one caution that I believe it was you raised at that conference. Where you said, what's the best way to do this? My response was having uh every city councilor call one of the three of us or all three of us doesn't work. You know, we gotta lead staff guys, right, is there to direct us. Doesn't mean we're not there to talk to you and you say, hey, I've got this senator friend that can do, what should I ask? Okay, that's not a problem, but we just need to manage the flow of information as well, so we're not.
We're not gonna pick sides between the five of you guys.
But I think, but on that though, I think it's also really important that that they have a united city that they're advocating that we have. Right? And so, and anyway, that's, we just don't want one of these guys going into an office and having a legislator tell that, you know, like, hey, that's crazy, say, well, I I would just talk, Lori, I was just talking to Lori here last week and Lori's somewhere else. So I think within our planning, we've gotta maybe be a little more intentional as to what are we wanting as a group? What can we all agree on? We wanna get out of the legislature, you know, this and this next six months or this next year. So that then they're, we're all really on the same page, you know, I think that's gonna make them the most effective.
One thing I'd like to say, your question though too is, you know, he's younger, just a younger legislator. We've had issues and Bill brought up one where a young legislator from a minority party, who didn't have a whole lot of political capital, you know, built up with leadership or anything like that. What we did, instead of trying to really run it on the basis of his relationship with his cloud, we made it a subject matter issue. We built a coalition that included the local DA and they were involved, ran it through a subject matter jurisdiction committee of veterans affairs. And then got a task force, what you mentioned, that was run by ODBA, so something that we otherwise would have had trouble getting through a urban dominated healthcare type agency. We ran through the DA with a much more rural focus and then got a government stamped study that said, this is the priority for veterans. That carried the day, even with a young legislator who didn't have a whole lot of political.
How do you push this kind of process, which sounds very complex, changing by the moment and everything's kind of in flux, especially once it's starting. How how do you guys connect with us, where we should be planning our aims or should not be? That could be all Jordan or Sam, how we manage those two groups?
So communicate, flow of communication can be under whatever sort of schedule and and type of communications we want. During sessions, we send out weekly newsletters and we have seven lobbyists who were in every room. We watch everything that goes on. We'll work with you at the beginning of session to go through a list of all the bills. When we read through these twenty five hundred bills or the summaries of them, we're gonna flag them for local government potential impacts. And we're gonna have a meeting with you and you guys are gonna tell us which ones of those three hundred you actually care about. And then you give us a ranking of how you want us to engage. We have a ranking system that's anything from just monitoring, report back to uh issue a white paper to full level engagement where we're testifying, meeting with legislators and trying to either push the bill or defeat the bill. We give you regular updates, then the weekly reports you get from us in written form will be of that universal bills you've already told us you care about. So you're gonna be reading only things you care about. And then we'll probably be, I imagine you'll have us back at your meetings, our most local governments we represent have us at every commission meeting and every council meeting, giving them a update. And some of them will have us with their department heads as well, so that we uh really get the the subject matter.
Sort of what the mayor said earlier, uh if you take his comments about a identified approach, actually matters more than because if I go down and I'm testifying or more importantly, I have one of you next to me and we're testifying. And the next panel up has another city council member who says, well, that's good, but you know, it only passed by a three to two voter, or you know.
Which happens, that happens.
It's awkward. And you can see legislators, look at you like, you really brought this up.
Right.
So so it's important, go back to the November nineteenth date, if you wanna be affirmative with something. I would say, totally have to write on scheduling, but I would say, you see what happens in the special session and legislative days. We'll give you reads up until then, of course, but then we reconvene late September, early October and say, okay, what are, let's firm these five things up that you want? And are you unanimous on what you want? And if there's one dissenter for whatever reason, that's one thing. But if there's multiple dissenters, that's a problem. So then you figure out, okay, of the five things, here's what we agree to. We worked to get the right drafting and everything done to beat the November nineteenth deadline the next month. So that gives you seven or eight weeks. But what that also does is allow us to vet these ideas and maybe we come back in December and say, you know, those five ideas? Two of them are dead on arrival. Don't spend your time screwing around with them. And this is why they're dead now. If you want us to, you know, we'll charge the hill, but you're not gonna win. And here are three that we have a, you know, a hundred chance at, uh because it is a short session. We're not going into the long session, we're going into the short session, which really shrinks the timelines.
Is every legislator only has two bills?
That's right, right. So, you know, we gotta manage that process.
So that's actually the big reason why I say, don't wait till November to get that ducks in a row in your stuff. Because with two bills, they already have ideas for the two bills.
Yeah, we need to get it from now.
The conception.
Because someone else is gonna be doing this, yes.
Emphasize something all this, that it is very easy being a local government to look at all of these bills and you almost have to justify how they don't affect you because you guys just have so just principles of everything. Um but if you go after everything, it you, it you're in a, it's ineffective, you just can't do it. But narrow it to what's the top five, what's the top ten, that is where I think is most helpful in work communication.
All right, well, we're three minutes past the.
Yeah, thank you so much.
So you came from Burmiston?
I did, yes.
You driving home, that's a long drive back and forth.
I got out of the heat, so I'm happy to be over here.
We'll go and close this work session and then we'll begin at seven ten. All right, I'm gonna officially call the Sandy City Council meeting to order. Can you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome. This is our second back at it in person, but our first with this council all together in the same room, which feels really good. So good to see everybody here tonight and uh these are kind of fun to be in person, so it's nice. Um a quick review of our city council meeting agenda for this evening. And we will be going, um calling for any changes to the agenda. We'll then be going to public comment, uh that will be an opportunity for members of the public to testify. Uh we'll then have our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from our June twenty first meeting. Under new business, we uh will be awarding a contract for the NPDES permitting support and approval guaranteed maximum price proposal. We'll then have a report from our city manager and then committee and council reports. With that, Jeff, will you call the roll?
Yes, Council Pete's here, Council Smallwood.
Here.
Council Sheldon.
Here.
Council Walker.
Here.
Council Exter.
Here.
Council Hockenson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Um are there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? All right, see none. Uh this is time for public comment. Uh the council welcomes your comments at this time. If you're attending here, uh this meeting here in person, there was an opportunity to fill out the sign up sheets um out front. We didn't receive any of those tonight. And then if you're attending the meeting via Zoom, uh people have the opportunity to fill out an online sign up uh form uh by twelve o'clock today, and we have Chris Jones from the Sandy Chamber of Commerce who's here. Chris, you'll be provided three minutes for public testimony, please. Actually, you don't need to state your name and address because you provided it on the form.
That's right. So, uh Chris, you should have the ability to unmute yourself now and uh you'll have three minutes. Welcome. Looks like you're in the process of doing so.
I hope. Oh, she's not logged in yet?
She's logged in. Um no, she should be able to unmute herself, unmute herself now.
Oh, sorry. I on the phone and on the computer, so I didn't realize that was the one I was going with. Apologize for that.
Welcome.
So Chris Jones with the Sandy Chair, Chamber of Commerce. And I put our address, street address in three, eight, nine, five, four Proctor Boulevard, number one, four, six. And I just wanted um to invite council tomorrow morning to our Good Morning Sandy, our first live one in a long time. It's going to be held at the AEC building, um which is also the Heritage Square Building as well at seven thirty in the morning in the lobby there till eight thirty. And then also wanted to announce that we have officially decided to move our music fair and feast event to September, which will be September tenth through eleventh, and we are calling it our end of summer festival. So just wanted to let you know that we've officially done that. And that was all I had. Thank you so much.
Well, we're excited for the events. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. All right, that's public testimony. Now, uh some of you may notice that a little different the way we're doing it. What we're trying to do is manage kind of this hybrid and in person model. We've also had a series of people who uh are a little reluctant to publicly provide their uh physical address. And the truth is, is that it's part of our charter that we we have to be receiving people's uh personal address. Uh and a lot of the times when people are saying they would follow up with the address, we just were not getting the address. So this is our attempt to really publicize it for people to sign up both virtually, you know, online as well as to do it here in person. We'll see how it goes, you know, we're not, um we're not strict on any rules, we're just, we're kind of living in a new time. Uh and we're trying to figure it all out. So if you hear feedback or anything from the public, please do bring those forward to me and Jeff and Jordan. Uh but we're just, we're trying to get it figured out how we're gonna be able to do this.
The cutoff's noon, the day of the council.
Noon, Jeff?
And that's flexible.
Yeah, but currently it's noon in the day.
It was noon for a second.
Yeah, yep, okay, all right. Uh with that, uh let's go ahead to our consent agenda, uh city council meeting minutes from June twenty first, two thousand twenty one. Unless there's discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes from twenty one June twenty twenty one.
Just, all right, got a motion from Counselor Smallwood, a second from Counselor Hockenson to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Or oppose, nay. Motion carries. Moving forward to new business, awarding the contract for NPDES permitting. Jordan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mike's gonna do the introduction and staff report, I'll just do my brief introduction as always. But before you tonight, this is the first of two items, that's wastewater related. And actually, the work session, before the work session, we did some touring of our wastewater facilities in the project. So I feel like a lot of wastewater going on today. And indeed, as our highest priority project and major capital infrastructure project going on tonight, seems to be a night where it lined up with a couple of these contracts in front of you. This one in particular is one that we've been waiting sort of in anticipation for. This is related to the next steps in exploring the permitting of a new discharge permit to the Sandy River as part of our wastewater facilities plan. As you've probably heard, us talk about numerous times with, as we explored the Roslyn Lake. Option with the constructed wetlands, as we've gone through the discharge evaluation with Murray Smith. There's still plenty of studies and work that need to go into this massive multi-phase project. And so the next step now is to work with DEQ, which is the permitting agent agency for this, this outfall. To really understand what they're going to require and understand more about the character of the treated water and the different options that we have there. So this is pretty exciting, actually. It's, you know, not, not one of these bigger contracts that have been before you, before you tonight. But this will be a major leap forward into our future wastewater system. And continuing the work that we've done with that alternative discharge analysis. Mike, jump in here on the rest of the report.
Yeah, as Jordan pointed out, this is the kind of the third phase of the process. You know, the first phase was the facilities plan, which kind of gave us a roadmap for what the city needs to do. And the second phase was the detailed discharge alternatives analysis, which just wrapped up. Then gave us an idea of where we can, where the options are to deal with the discharge. And then this phase kind of deals with the how we're going to do this. I should point out that the NPDS stands for National Pollutant Elimination. National Gluten Discharge Elimination System. So let me get that out of the way first, because we're gonna be using that acronym quite a bit. So this, this stage will kind of help inform the, you know, kind of the steel and concrete aspects of the project, you know. We can't really build a treatment plant until we know the limits that, you know, will be legally, will be placed on the discharge for the treatment plant. So if to start with that process with DEQ. They won't entertain an application for a NPDES permit until we do a mixing zone study, temperature analysis, water quality analysis. Some of this work has already taken place. We've been monitoring water quality in the Sandy River for the past two years. And we've been doing some flow monitoring in the Sandy River for about the same length of time. And so we're building on that work that we solicited proposals in early May. We received two proposals, one from Parametrics and one from West Yo's, who's also the design consultant on the existing wastewater treatment plant project. We had a team from consisting of city staff and Leeway Engineering Solutions staff to rank the proposals. It was pretty close. And we also checked, we had a team that checked the references from each proposer. And the consensus of the team and the highest ranked proposal was from Parametrics. And so that's the scope of work and fee that's in the packet. We were kind of seeking a firm that had permitting experience. This is kind of a rare thing, you know, not a lot of DEQ staff are familiar with a new NPDS permit in a new receiving stream. And so we'll kind of, hasn't been done in a long time. There's a lot of permit renewals, but new permits and new receiving streams are kind of a rare thing at DEQ. So we're seeking a firm that had experience, recent experience doing this. And Parametrics was successful in submitting an application for Port of Morrow for a discharge to the Columbia River. And they also did some work, I don't know what the receiving stream was in Washington, but with the city of Marysville, Washington. So they also had, you know, they have a strong environmental team as well as an engineering team. And so we like that mix with Parametrics. And since then, since we selected Parametrics, we've gone back and forth on the scope of services desire as a fee. And they split the scope up into two buckets, basically, one, if you look in the proposal that's in the scope that's in the packet, the items in green are the are like optional items and the items in blue font are the base scope. So right now, we're just seeking approval for the base scope. We'll find out that as the process continues, that DEQ may ask for additional information. Either we didn't anticipate or the extent of which wasn't anticipated in the original scope. The public may want some more information as well. And, you know, third party interest groups may want some additional information. So there's flexibility in the entire project to add additional work or additional analysis to the scope. But right now, we're just looking for approval on the base scope. There's still some back and forth we need to do with Parametrics. So at this point, we just like asked the council to approve, authorize the city manager to negotiate a final scope and fee with Parametrics. With a not to exceed figure of $494,173.
Thanks, Mike. And questions from council? Or questions or motion? Yeah.
Question, if we only approve the 494, the base scope today. What, what's going to obligate the provider to honor those add-ons later, six months from now? When we come back, we want to have option A or option B.
You know, I think within a reasonable period of time, I think these prices would hold. And again, we're just kind of taking our best estimate of what these additional scope items might be. This is based on the Parametrics experience with permit applications. And so they're assuming that, you know, worst case scenario, DEQ may ask for this, public may ask for this, interest groups may ask for this. They built those in in here. So if we added those items, I think, if we found out within six months, I don't think, we can, we can confirm that, but I don't think.
The way the motion was worded is that we're just authorizing the price. Yeah. And so the negotiation isn't only for the base. I would like to see us negotiate and contract the total amount with a release that's optional to where we may or may not exercise those options down the road. If you can, if they're open to that.
Well, some of these are not completely defined and the, and the scope may change.
You just, I'm real worried about what we're seeing with the other contracts in terms of price increases and availability and everything else is going up. It'd be nice to have things locked in.
Yeah, I would say the consulting market is probably not as volatile as the contracting market. So I don't think, you know, the price escalation probably wouldn't be the same, but there may be some pressure on it. We can do that.
From a contracting standpoint, maybe David could also chime in on this too. But I mean, ultimately, what you're asking for is maybe the council consider, you know, the not to exceed be like the 875. And we're only gonna, we're not gonna exceed that amount, but that gives me the flexibility to authorize the amendments when those things come up and be able to execute on that.
I think we should discuss that.
I was gonna say, if everybody can hear me okay, that, that is probably that, well, don't want to negotiate against yourself. But that, I think it's a pretty typical way that you would do it, i- if there is work that's gonna follow. That still remains the city's discretion, but maybe that there's a larger overall NTE built in to begin with. Discussion, questions?
So I can see a lot of this work has to do with the existing sewer treatment plant and also the proposed site by Roslyn Lake. Does any of this work get done at the site on university?
You know, the, the types of facility we can, we can get to a level where we have some confidence what that was gonna be. But no, not as far as citing or site specific.
Talking about the old city shops on Sunset.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure we were thinking the same. Yeah, no, it's fine. I just want to make sure that what I was thinking was the same.
Jordan, do you have a preference? You know, what I suggested in terms of expanding that at this point in time?
I mean, the flexibility to execute, you know, amendments within, instead of having to come back to council, say, package these amendments together. This is what we've learned from the first $500,000 worth of work. We think we need to do these further studies, whatever. We would probably want to package that and come back to council with those amendments, you know, if they're gonna exceed a certain amount. This, you know, provides us more flexibility to manage that. You know, and, you know, this doesn't give us a blank check or anything, let's still negotiate. They have a scope and fee proposed for those, you know.
Jordan, how are you utilizing the wastewater oversight committee right now?
So we did meet with the, the oversight committee on Thursday. We're meeting monthly with counselors, Exner, Hockenson, and that, I think it's going really well.
Is there a reason? I asked, is there a reason why they can't just provide their, you know, we provide that kind of flexibility to Jordan and ask him to provide an update out of this monthly report to the wastewater facilities committee?
That's, that's kind of how I felt about it. I mean, my only concern was increasing to that amount. I mean, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to it. Would just be that I want to make sure that we're kept in the loop and not, oh, hey, by the way, we've done five amendments now. And, and here we are down the road and it's like, well, how did we get here? So that would be my only concern. It's just not, not that you wouldn't keep us in the loop, Jordan, I just want to make sure nothing gets missed, so.
As far as the interactions that I've had with the rest of the wastewater team, they're pretty open about what they will or will not do. And I gotta say, both Dawn and I are pretty watchful about the prices. So if there's something that comes up, certainly we're gonna test the waters, push a little bit, make sure that we don't just roll over. But no, in a typical, I'll get the acronym wrong here, NTP. There are a lot of things that happen as you go down that road and you find things that DEQ may require that pop up because of the investigations and the studies. There'll be, probably will be some changes. But I guess in the past, we have always said, here's the number, not to exceed. If that goes above that, then let's review that. But I do want to be sensitive about making sure we don't delay, want to make sure we go fast as we can, so we don't end up with something like we have with the wastewater treatment plant. We don't want to be delaying things.
I'm, I'm good with someone providing their motion, the additional flexibility. What I would, what I would prefer is, is though that we were having, you know, having Jordan also asking him to provide it, an update of any changes and stuff in his report to the committee, to the oversight.
I think the revised motion would be, you know, authorize the company's couple of work fee not to exceed $875,000, which would include the base and optional tasks laid out in this whole work.
I'm happy to make that motion.
Great.
I moved authorized the city manager to negotiate scope of work fee with parametrics to provide technical environmental services associated with NPDES permitting process for the base and optional. For the new wastewater treatment facility not to exceed 875,000 with instructions to report back to the council every time we dip into those optional items.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, a motion by Counselor Hockenson, a second by Counselor Exner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries, all right. Next item under new business, approval guaranteed maximum price appro- proposal number one. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. So second item on wastewater tonight, we have Brittany Park and Rob Lee with Leeway Engineering, our owners reps. And we also have a couple of other team members that are part of the CMGC team working on the wastewater treatment plant. Existing treatment plant improvements project. Tonight before you is the guaranteed maximum price for the GMP one, I should say, for the existing treatment plant improvements. And Brittany Park is gonna present some information and do the team introductions. And kind of the contract that's before you, what's included in the GMP. But this is also an opportunity for us to kind of present some news to the council about what we're seeing with prices. We've seen the effects of the pandemic and the supply chains. And, you know, sort of the economy restarting back up on schedule. And we received this GMP like 10, 15 days ago. And we're seeing now the effects coming out in our bidding and prices. So tonight is kind of a good night. Now that we're under this deadline to continue our progress on this work on the treatment plant. But to start, you know, talking with the council about what we're seeing in the bids and what maybe we're, we're looking at and how we, you know, mitigate that risk going forward and sort of plan for what we're seeing now coming in on prices. This information was presented to the oversight committee last week, kind of fresh off the, the press there. And so Brittany, I'll hand it off to you to go ahead and, I think, first introduce the team that's joined us tonight from both Slayton and West Yo's. That are working on the, on the plant and then dive into the, the GMP and the costs.
Let me try to share my screen really quick.
Brittany, we can hear you, I think you might want to turn up your microphone volume a little bit.
Okay.
That's better.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Can you raise all of the, my screen up?
No, we're not seeing your screen yet.
Not yet, but that's okay, because you might want to do introductions. Well, right now, you can, you might not be able to see this, but the council can see everybody that's participating virtually. It might be a good opportunity to do introductions first before you share a screen.
Hi, everyone. Yes, here tonight to talk to you guys about GMP one. My name is Brittany Park, I'm the owner's wife with Leeway Engineering Solutions. We also got Rob Lee that is here with us tonight. He's also with Leeway Engineering Solutions. Then we have Preston Van Meter, he is here with West Yo's, they are the design team on this project. And then finally, we have Clayton Thompson here with Slayton. They are the construction manager, general contractor on this project. And I'm sharing my screen, but I don't know why. Jeff, are you able to show my slides, would that work?
Yes, Brittany, I can certainly do that, just a moment. I mean, you.
She should.
Just a moment. Can you see that?
Perfect, yes, thank you.
Yep, yeah, okay.
All right. So yeah, next slide. So this is a project overview for y'all. We have split up the work on this project into three different work packages. They're named GMP one, GMP two and GMP three simply. The reason why we separated it out into three different packages is because we wanted to be able to get to construction as soon as possible on the first GMP. Everything here on this slide that is highlighted in red is part of GMP one, which is what you're approving construction for tonight. That includes work on the headworks, the lower maintenance building, the aeration basins, the secondary clarifiers and the sledge pumping. Also, anything that is graded in or highlighted in solid color here are items that the, this project will help increase capacity of the plant with. As you guys know, many of our permitting issues have to do with the capacity of the existing treatment plant. And so anything that increases capacity of the treatment plant is very critical to this project. And as you can see, those highlighted items are all within the, and GMP one. And we did that on purpose, because we tried to make the most critical and the core concepts of this, of this project first, and so we can construct them first. So and then you can see, there's one other item that will help improve capacity in the future, and that's part of GMP three, and that's the filtration building. And next slide. Thanks, Jeff. All right, so now we have to talk about budget. So originally, the budget for this project was developed by Murray Smith in the pre-design phase in 2020. They did a valuation and set a cost estimate at $3 million for this project. And we hired on. Then we hired on West Yose to complete the, the design phase of the project. We did, before we started doing any of the, the actual designing, we did a pre-design evaluation and made a cost estimate for the, the project. This cost estimate updated the values to 2021 prices as well as added that filtration building. It was added scope per request of DEQ. That, that cost estimate came out at 4.9 million. That is the cost estimate we have used in your rate model today. And then now we are in the construction phase of the project. And so the pre-construction phase proposal for GMP one, which you see here in that blue bar, came back at 4.5 million. And that makes the total cost estimate for the construction phase now set at 7.4 million. I have to note that those bars in orange and gray for GMP two and three are still based off of the cost estimate. We do not have construction proposals for those items yet. We just have a construction proposal for GMP one, which is at 4.5. So as you can see, there's a difference of $2.5 million between the design. It says, it says design, but we did it before the 30% design phase. So it was very early on in the design phase, but there is a $2.5 million difference between those two. So the team immediately jumped in and did analysis of why that difference happened. And so, next slide. So, uh, the cost of work for this project, out of the cost of work, 73% was hard bid items. That means we sent out solicitations and we got bids back on those items. The lowest bid is who we awarded to work to. So that's 73% of the cost of work. The remaining cost of work is the cost for labor, materials, and equipment for Slayden to do the work. So looking into the reason why we had these exceedances, the first thing that came, came up and the most significant reason is because of unprecedented increase in pricing. We pulled the construction cost index based off of Seattle numbers, which is the closest to Sandy, and found that construction costs have inflated an average of 6.9% per month since January of 2021. This is not normal. This is a huge amount, 6.9% on average per month. That means when we pulled those quotes for the design cost estimate based on January and February numbers, those values we pulled then have increased greatly since then, 6.9% of inflation per month. Also, we found that there, because of our aggressive schedule, we were trying to get this GMP one done this season. That caused extra schedule risk. It also caused extra overtime. And because of that, there, those cost implications. The next item was lack of subcontractor interest. We, so we had 28 different scopes that we competitively bitted for this portion of the project. These were posted publicly and we also reached out to 154 subcontractors to quote on this work. And from that, we only received 45 bids back. And so we were seeing that this is ways, this is less responsive we usually have with lower amount of bids you receive back. You see that you have less competition and the prices tend to go up. And then the final reason is design evolution. So the, the cost estimate we based our rate model on was the pre-design phase. And so since that time, we've obviously, the design has evolved. We've added details that weren't there originally. And so some of those things like, for example, we didn't have originally our temporary electrical system in the bed. And now that we're to the final design stage, that has been added into the cost estimate. That is now in the, in the construction proposal from Slayden. So that is the last item for the reasons for why this, there's this exceedance in budget. And so, next slide. We want to make sure that we don't have any impact to your rate pairs now because we just increased rates. And so these were the recommendations that we came up to, to mitigate those impacts. So the first is that we move the upcoming fiscal year expenditures further into the future. So your rate model is based on a certain amount of expenditures this fiscal year. So if you take other items that are in this fiscal year and move them out here, it allows for this extra budget for this year. And that mitigates that impact. The next item is prioritizing plant performance for GMP two and GMP three. This just means we're going to prioritize things that increase plant performance and the other things we, we will not. So that will help with budget in the future phases. And then the next item was increased future project contingency funding based on market inflation. We don't think this is an isolated scenario, unfortunately. Costs of construction are, are increasing across the country. And this is a good time to reflect on our future budgets and provide for extra contingency based on the market rates that we're seeing today. And so with that, we recommend that you all move to authorize the GMP one for the wastewater treatment plant, plant project. And this, this is the core of the project. It will provide the greatest improvement for your permit compliance, and it's a very, very essential part of the project. So, yeah, with that, do you guys have any questions for, for the team and I?
Any questions for the team?
I have some comments, person in that might bring questions. So this is a wake-up call for all of us. Every project we have, every, all these, these prizes we talked about earlier in our work session today, we have in our mind a cost, and what we're seeing is huge increases in what those costs might actually pencil out unless we see a reversal in experience. But with the infrastructure bill coming on and everything else, it's going to be a while before we see things to come down. Now, it's volatile. We saw wood spike. It dropped 40 or 50% last week. So it's, there's a huge volatility out there right now that makes this almost impossible to know. But that, that was one of my strong recommendations is that we need to seriously up the contingency numbers. They threw 5% out today. I think that's really low, given what we're seeing in terms of contingency, especially if we're working on what they called that 30%. And that means they're, they don't have a lot of detail in what they're putting together. And when we talk about community cap, something else, I mean, we have even less. So the less detail, the more contingency we need, so. It's bad.
It's just not this market. We, I mean, pitching the choir, it's every market. Where I work, it's where we all work.
It's the world.
It's the world right now, and what I hear from stuff is it's not going to be, it's going to be like this for seven years plus.
Well, I'm not in disagreement with what Don just said, because I am in agreement with it, but I do think we need to watch and be careful as we go through this process. And that was a big discussion when we had the team meeting here a few days ago. That I think we need to watch to see if we can save money in any particular way without impacting some of the real criteria that really crucial. In this particular case, we talked a lot about, and I appreciate the team presenting the fact that we are trying as much as possible. I think 100% of the capacity increases is going to be accomplished before the rainfall season happens this fall. It's going to be the other additional work that won't impact our, our capacity increases. I think that's the kind of stuff that we need to be very careful about, where we just make these decisions intellectually. And in this particular case, I, I guess, I feel regardless of the additional expenses, which just makes me cringe that we are on the right track of saying, we're going to do this portion of the GMP one and let some of the other auto-mo- automotive, automatic type of things that are going to be on the next two and three happen at a different time when we have the money in the next calendar year. So I guess I'm suggesting that we just watch this carefully, but this is something we just got to do.
I have some concerns that the whole process that we approved in, actually, I don't, I guess I didn't approve it. But anyway, the council approved in December this approach to having a construction manager, general contractor procurement method. And it talks about how, that, you know, most important advantage to the city was substantial time savings. And yet here we are, you know, six months later, and we're just now getting the bids in and they're coming in, you know, two and a half times or whatever the huge amount is. One of the things that I learned in trail and recreation project construction contracting was you never let, let a, a contract out, you know, to bid after about, you know, February, March 15th at the latest. Because any contractor, you know, in May and June and July already have their buildings, you know, they already have all their projects lined up. And anything that they're going to take on after that ends up, you know, they just way overbid it hoping that, you know, if they get it, they might, you know, whatever they're already under contract for, they'll, they'll probably kind of, you know, try to double play it. But my concern is that it appears to me that we haven't got real timely estimates on the work. And then the other concern I have is that if we apparently only, we don't even have any competition. And we're, you know, this GMP from Slayden is kind of, you know, the only option we have evidently. We don't even have an option to go with somebody else who might be cheaper. And, and this is a maximum, guaranteed maximum price. I'm more interested in probably, you know, what's the minimum price or, you know, something, something less than this. It seems like when you have a maximum price, that ends up what it's going to be all of a sudden. And I, I just kind of concerned about how this process worked with, you know, again, the idea that we were going to be saving time and money. And it did, you know, and I get things going up. I understand that fully, but it was, you know, between March and, you know, it was March, April, June. You know, I mean, it's, it's about a three-month period when things went from, you know, two million to four and a half. And I don't think things increased in price that much. So it seems like our, however we're doing this, you know, I guess, you know, I don't know if we have to kind of just eat it and go with it. But for GMP two and three, I feel like we better get our act together a lot better than that and get some better estimates and more timely estimates and more options for other bids or something like that, so that we can be a little bit more conservative and, you know, fiscally conservative with, with the dollars. Because like I said, our rates are, are based on, you know, some, a lot less than this. And we don't want to be going out with higher rates than we already have, so.
Just a couple points, counterpoints, I guess, even. I think your, your observation of, of contracting and the seasonal, seasonality of the contracting is very applicable when you're working outside. Certainly in my other life, it's always that pattern. But I think when you're working on these kind of contracts, this is my past professional experience. Growing up in the, growing up in the business, it wasn't as seasonal. It had more to do with budget cycles than, than actual seasonal cycles. But if you're, if you're out in places where you have environmental things, it's different. The, the second thing I think that I'd like Brittany to talk about was the the complexity of working on our existing facility. If you can kind of address why this project's so special and not just a turnkey, anybody can bet it kind of thing.
Yeah, no problem. So we're doing retrofits to the existing system. And you still have to treat wastewater while you're doing construction in these existing basins. And so it creates a, a, a unique sequencing pattern, and it adds a lot of complexity to, to the construction of this. And so that's why it's really important to have a good contractor onboard a CMGC like Slayden to be a partner in this. They helped us develop the sequencing plans that we can utilize to do, complete the construction. It's a big deal because if you don't have that kind of relationship with your contractor, if they don't sequence our construction right, they can cause permit violations to us if the wastewater isn't being cleaned properly during their construction. So having them onboard to do constructibility reviews and help us with this process has been very valuable to the city.
I guess I would agree with Kathleen, and that I think there are some timing and some observation of when the market is to our advantage rather than putting it out as it can be. And I know we've been trying to go through it fast and try to get some of these projects out. We've been talking about doing contracts that would be built as fast as possible. But it seems to me that we could have found a better time to put some of these on the table to be able to look at what the market is. So we can get more of the competition. And when you got competition, we're going to reduce the prices. But at this point, I don't see us having much strength of alternatives. It's just, there's so much that has been put on the table with DEQ and other groups about getting as much of this capacity built before the all rains happen, that it's be pretty difficult for me to see us slow down, stop, take on, or not take on things that deal with capacity. Yes, we do need to eat some of this increases, but boy, if we could look at some of the way we go about advertising, sure seems that we could might be able to make a better deal.
You know, I'll go to you. I just, so to remember is, is, you know, in, in being in on those conversations with DEQ and EPA, timeline and expediency is very important in this project in a lot of ways. Now, we also, we have to do best practices, the order of due diligence and all that. The other is, 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 you know, we, we're, you remember back in December, we're talking to DEQ, we're doing all this. Where, you know, we've got our own, you know, engineer that we've brought on to bring it a lot quicker along, you know, the, the timeline. And all of a sudden, the world turns upside down. We've got shipping, we've got inflation, we've got everything else that's stalling the project. And so I do, I agree with every, I, I agree with 99%, 100% what you said. I just, I think there's also a lot of just things happening in the world right now. And then it's, it's what's even making this compound in the situation is the timing and EPA, EQ, and their patience rapidly, you know, kind of exasperating everything else, so.
Yeah, just a couple of comments on, on timeline stuff, because I, I hear that, and that's been, you know, one of our big pushes, right? You know, it's since the MEO was done, the facilities plan has been, how can we do this as fast as possible? Given, you know, the, basically the hard deadline of, you know, switching back to tickle creek discharge in November. I, you know, I don't want to be, sound defensive, but I, and I, I think we've been moving pretty fast on this project, actually. And a lot of that has to do with the council's decision to bring on the owner's rep and Brittany and Rob working with Preston. I think we brought on West Yose, you know, late last year. And again, to the complexity of the site and the amount of, you know, procurement packages and bid packages that have to be pulled together for Preston and his team that had designed that work. And then to bring on Slayden, which I think was in March, we brought on Slayden, who then has to pull together, put together these massive documents of bidding packages that we had then go and prime the market to kind of shop this out. And then, of course, we get hit at the end of the pandemic with this, you know, issue of supply and business and, you know, material costs going up. You know, we were, we were looking good, is what I'm kind of trying to say, is things were looking good. We were moving fast. We had a good contractor, CMGC onboard. West Yose was, you know, working with the project team at Violia on really driving out what are the essential things that we need to do for this first phase. And so we all, it, it did take the wind out of us. It took, it really took the breath out of us when we got this first, for this bid back. And like Brittany said, 76% are hard bid costs. And each one of those, you know, is a big, big bid package that the CMGC put out to get these subs to bid on. And so that's what the project costs. And the difficulty in estimating project costs, especially these large, massive, complex costs, is there's so many different cost estimates that go along. There's a preliminary estimate, there's a 30% to move this project faster. We skipped the 30% and the 60% to really get, you know, a cost estimate for our rate setting. The project going to cost, but the project's going to cost. And, and for us now, this is like, I think it was perfectly what councillor Hockenson said. This is a warning shot that, you know, we have the opportunity now to say, okay, we, this is our first bid, big bid, big contract that's come in now. We need to look at how we manage this project, this project budget going forward to mitigate some of these risks and putting, you know, these larger contingencies. Having this, having the CMGC process, doing the procure, early procurements have been really effective for pricing. But, you know, preparing ourselves, building in a bigger contingency, and, you know, kind of managing the project with the Oversight Committee is, is, I think, good tools to have. And we've now had our sort of warning shot. We've had our sort of, you know, the warning signs of, of us trying to crack forward. And let's try not to step in it again by, you know, underestimating what the cost might be. Let's be realistic and, and be conservative on how we manage this project budget.
Yep. I, I think it's also fair to say that without an owner's rep, if we were doing this a more traditional fixed price bid upfront kind of thing, we wouldn't be looking to put anything under contract right now. We would still be sometime in the future with whatever cost volatility would be there. It, it feels like it's been slow, but there's been a lot going on to get to this point. To get to this point.
Yeah, I agree exactly with what you were just gonna say. I was gonna bring up that thing without the owner's rep piece of it, it's not, it's kind of like when we built the fiber across the project. We actually got basically the same thing in owner's rep and who helped us do all those things and put them all together, get all those bits. We're a small staff, so I think we're way farther ahead. It is frustrating. I'm, I'm right there with everybody else, but. Also no realistically there, so let's learn from that, maybe in a timeline, maybe we do go out for those other two. You know, way earlier, I just know from experience personally in what I do. We're getting no one bidding any projects, and so here, like literally school districts are not getting anybody to bid on it, and like. Great, summer's going away, we can't get anybody to build, we have a bond and no one will come build. So, you know, it's those type of things, so we're likely to get that, so. In that aspect of it, uh, but I do agree, um, you know, maybe, uh, knowing what we know now from this part, the next two phases. Could be done. Maybe we adjust that little timeline a little bit there, but I mean, I'm proud of where we are and have that to be able. What we've accomplished in the last few months, um, I think has gone a lot faster to Jordan's point than we had seen in the last couple of years. If you're like, we're going down that path, but.
All right, do we have a motion?
I make a motion, uh, to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with, for GMP package number one with. Slading construction in the amount of four million five hundred forty-two thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars and zero cents.
Do you have a second? Motion by Counselor Pete Told, a second by Counselor Smallwood, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Uh, extension by Counselor Walker, uh, motion carries. All right, uh, with that, uh, report from the city manager.
Thanks, Brittany, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Get to work. Remember to say goodbye when they're right in front of you.
As you're walking out.
Okay, brief report tonight, um, I just want to report out on, uh, the events a couple of weeks ago, uh, the safe groups, uh, pride event. Um, we didn't have any issues, um, and, you know, we did receive a lot of public comments at the last meeting and I thought. Be good to just acknowledge that again, um, you know, it's concerning, you know, hearing things about intimidation and students, you know, are youth in town. Not feeling safe, um, to, you know, exercise their freedoms and, and express themselves and, you know, our community values. It's a welcoming place for all and, and it's incumbent upon all of us to, to make them feel welcome, that they're, they're part of this community, they feel safe. And expressing themselves and, and being out there, uh, so I want to thank your police department for reaching out, uh, for being there, staffing that event. Like I said, uh, you know, it was hot, very hot, um, so, uh, folks were staying hydrated, um, and there wasn't any, uh, uh, issues. So that's, that's great. We are, uh, we've turned back to permitting, um, and doing reservations at the plaza, so hopefully that will help mitigate some of this tension between. Multiple groups trying to occupy the same safe space, um. Fireworks, uh, we did, we had, I think, eighteen calls for service at night that were far work, maybe related, um, no citations. Uh, the reports that I've heard, maybe council reports will, will be different, is that it was more of a quiet night than, uh, comparatively to last year. Um, and fire reported that there was no calls, uh, regarding fires, so. Uh, very good to hear, um, given the, the dire.
That was really what a lot of the debate was centered around, right? Yeah, okay, yeah. I don't think we can underscore that enough.
And then, uh, just a couple real, real quick, uh, no meeting on August second, so remember about that, so, um, yeah, and we'll have a. Just one meeting in August, well, that second meeting in August, but no meeting in August. I sent out a note about LOC conference coming up in October, um, in Bend. Uh, I think that registration will open, uh, at the end of the month or in August, yeah, so we'll, we'll help you out with that. Um, uh, nothing really to report on COVID, we're open, uh, you know, it's good to see everybody here back in person for a second meeting. Public's welcome to, to come to meetings too, um, so it's good to, good to be fully reopened again. Um, and then lastly, we are still recruiting for a number of positions, just putting that flag out there, seasonal positions, uh, if you know anybody that's just looking for. You know, a job between, you know, college or whatever, um, we've been, we've been struggling to recruit for those seasonal jobs. Um, and then very soon, possibly this week, we'll go out for Parks and Recreation Director recruitment. Um, and then public works slash, uh, city engineer position will be, uh, coming up really soon too, so, uh, a lot in the works, uh, in the job recruitment. That's it for me.
Did you say you sent out a note about the League of Oregon Cities? Because I didn't get one from you.
I, I mentioned in my weekend update. There was a landies training coming up that looked, uh, interesting in that LOC conference.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Hopeless.
Thanks. Uh, I went to that, uh, pride event and, uh, found it very educational, hot, obviously. Uh, but the thing that surprised me the most was most everybody there was young, you know, probably, probably high school for sure, and I would say. Less eight, probably less than eighteen for them, a lot of them anyway. And, and because of that, it, it actually affected, uh, and helped me maybe see some of the situation of the. Different camps in town who've been going at each other for a while. Because, uh, while I recognize our right to protest and, and state whatever we want to in a public forum within very limit, within. Only a few limits. I think there's an appropriate, just, uh, wise way to do that. And I think that. Whoever, our town, all of our people need to be more aware of what they say and the impact that may have on somebody. And understand the audience that they're targeting that message to. Uh, us, any, a kid is a kid in my mind and for an adult to target a kid in any minor way. I, it, it, however insignificant, is inappropriate. If, if any of us had kids out there and somebody was yelling, you're a loser, or just something simple like that, we would take issue with that. And we would stand up, and so I, I saw this issue quite a bit differently after having gone to say that. Your right to protest exists to say things, but be aware that when you're targeting a youth. You can have a lasting consequence on, it can be very damaging. And, and we need to be smarter and more caring, more, you know, and truly more inclusive is, especially when we're looking at. These, these fragile parts of our, our community, so it was good, I'm glad I went, they, they treated me wonderful and, uh, it was a good experience. Second thing, um, moving on, we got the pool, uh, task force thing.
Let's get it right.
An exploratory task force. All right. Anyway, we're having our kickoff meeting on Thursday, we got everybody coming in, we're going to do a little workshop. And really come up with those, uh, that plan, that work plan that we want to do, so thank you for, uh, the changes we made last council meeting. Pretty excited about getting a kick off and more to report on that moving forward, so, thanks, thank you, Counselor Exer.
Yeah, uh, I've had a couple of people tell me that they're using the library as a. Bellwether about how to open and get ready at things like that, and I noticed that. My conversation with a couple of the library folks that they're moving into a transition period. Are we looking at opening up the library tomorrow, tomorrow completely? Okay, all right, excellent, thanks. A little bit different flavor of how that was going to be, I talked to some folks, but I'm glad to hear that, good, excellent. You're not gonna like this one, it's, uh, the islands are starting to become weed patches again.
Threw it out today.
All right, here's a really good one, too, um, like, a lot of you know, my grandkids are in town for the last month or so, and they are participating in the. Uh, recreation events that are out there, in this case, uh, the Borns Dead Parks, it is so well organized. I just watched that today and kids are running over every place and they're having the right time of. Being able to get their water and get their snacks and then learn things and I have to say that, that they got these big coaches written on their t-shirts. They're really doing a great job, I just want to say thank you, just good stuff, uh, they are getting the kids plenty of exercise, teaching them something and. Interacting socially and just really a great, um. Time to be out there and of course, watching my grandkids play doesn't hurt a bit either, so, good job, and I'm done with that.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Walker.
Hi, um, I wasn't able to, uh, attend the, uh, event that Don did, but I did hear about it. And one of the things that, um. I was thinking that we might want to consider doing is considering a revised resolution to our July twenty-twenty resolution. That dealt with racism to include LBGTQ and, um, and also in that resolution kind of expressed concern. You know, we were asked by the public, by several members that testified at the last meeting to denounce the Proud Boys and those kind of folks. And, you know, I think there's a way to do something, you know, to express concern for groups that threaten and harass those groups. Whether, whether they be, you know, people of color or LBGTQ or whatever, in a way, so. I guess you, you guys did such a great job on drafting that resolution before, um, last year at this time, I, I was wondering if, if it. You know, if there was support for doing something like that, and then even further, I would like to see that resolution, um, if it is passed. Attached to all plaza rental permits, just so, so that folks that are renting the, the plaza have that as part of their permit. And know what, you know, what the city's position is, because I think, you know, I don't know that from, from. Appearances and what we heard at the last meeting, I don't know that they realize that, you know, what our, our formal position has been. In the past with that resolution, so, um, having it just be attached as part of the rental, uh, permit for the plaza would, would be a, a start for that. Um, there was, I, I've got a couple of questions about the process, it's probably, it's too late now, but just, you know, going forward. There was in the discussion today with workshop, which was very, um, helpful, was just kind of how y'all, uh, you know, I kind of got. Oh, you know, this to- talked about talking to any kind of senators and that kind of thing and, or testifying and stuff, and I'm just a little bit confused. That I heard folks talking about how they were testifying and maybe that was something that was sanctioned, Lori, I know you were supposed to be saying, you know, testifying for something officially. Then maybe given direction, but I also heard other people say that they were also testifying and I, I just am not quite clear on that process and so going forward. It would just be helpful to have a little bit of more discussion and clarity about how we do that and how, and, and like I said, you know, with, with this, um. Two hour workshop or whatever we're gonna have, kind of how do we work with thi- this group, um, they have a lot of potential to help us, I think. Um, I am curious about the timeline on Parks Master Plan, Jordan, um, and I, as, as was said, the library is opening. Um, the library also, um, applied for a bookmobile grant, um, north of a hundred fifty thousand dollars and, um. So, you know, it was a very well-written grant, they did a great job on it, um, I did kind of ask how that. How operations of that staffing and vehicle maintenance and things like that are kind of covered in our existing budget, because I do know that with our. Library budget, I was real worried about how little money we have for purchasing new materials, the digital content, audio books, all the things. We like to, to check out, um, all that budget is really low and so adding, you know, doing more with less is kind of a. You know, something's got to go and I'm just kind of curious about how, how we incorporate a bookmobile, um, into our existing budget. Um, it's a great idea at reaching the, you know, the folks, because it brings computer access and things like that, it's a, you know, it's a great white hat thing, it's just. Managing how we fund that in the future, because ob- obviously operations and maintenance of it is not included in the grant, so. But they did a great job on the, um, budget, uh, on the grant application and we've got our fingers crossed, thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it, uh, Counselor Sheldon.
Yeah, uh, Chris stole my thunder, I was gonna announce this, um, she sent me a text and, and about the. Chamber meant tomorrow morning, so, um, but it just rehashes it to Heritage Square from seven thirty to eight thirty.
Thank you, Counselor Smollett.
Yeah, so, I, to, uh, to count Kathleen's point and to kind of Dawn's point, you guys are, are on the same track. What I would like to see, if we're gonna, if we're gonna change our, our previous resolution, um. I'd like language in there that's a little more generic, and the reason that I say that is because there's always going to be a group, right? And so instead of naming groups, naming specific, let's, let's create a generic language that's just, hey, we're not going to tolerate. This type of behavior, um, you know, regardless, because it doesn't matter who it is, right? So I, moving forward, I think that's, for me, that's what I would like to see is just more of a, then it's all encompassing and we're not having this conversation all the time. And then aside from that, Jordan, just a quick question, uh, because we did cancel the fireworks for the second year in a row. I know, I know, but, but, yeah, yeah. Because they got, they got postponed, I'll put it that way, for the second year of the, my, my question is more of. Um, I realized that that money got rolled over to this year to use for the fireworks, I know they already had their sand. Uh, hill placed out there, so are, are we out in this Clackamas County Bank, are we out any funds for any of that or? How does, how does that sit, Tyler?
It was the deposit, uh, last fiscal year with the first show that was canceled, this show that's been postponed, we paid half of it. Um, and we are able to use that towards whenever we do outpost, uh, the show hopefully before the end of the year in conjunction with our.
But it has to be used before the end of the year? Uh, we end up with a.
There might be a little bit of wiggle room, but we will need to.
Just December thirty-first, that doesn't count, I see.
December thirty-first, instead of closing it early and do a new year show, we need to squeeze in, I think.
And how much money is that?
Uh, the show in total is ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
And so we paid fifty percent so far.
Five thousand?
Yeah. I don't foresee, I mean, obviously we'd have a, a terribly dry, you know, summer and, and fall. And that might change what I'm about to say, but I don't foresee, uh, Western display, the vendor that we use being difficult to work with and rescheduling it. Later on in the year, it's just going to be weather dependent.
There's, there's no provisions in the contract for change in ordinance or code or permit.
Not that I'm aware of.
Cool.
And then lastly, I just wanted to, um, kind of to Carl's point on, uh, on the medians, uh, Jewelberry looks great. The weeds on Jewelberry at about mid, the first part of July are almost as tall as I am, and, uh, so they got rocked. Last week, so thank you very much.
Good job.
And that's all I got.
Thank you, Counselor Pete Told.
Uh, you might have seen the notice, uh, there for the, uh, I don't know, we call it the grand opening of the pickleball courts coming.
Yeah.
Here in a couple of weeks, uh, so I was quick to shoot that to my parents who have been bugging me for years of, uh, trying to get the city to. Get a couple of courts, it's very popular, it was put on there, so, uh, for those that don't know how to play, go learn how to play, it's a, it's a fun sport. And, um, and I was gonna bring up the annual conference, the League of Oregon Cities, I, I recommend, especially for the new counselors to. Be able to go, it's in Bend, and so it's, uh, it's a lot different than when it's in, say, Portland or Salem, I think there's. Yeah, we, I've always gotten more out of it, but it's been over there, the communities that we get to go visit over there as well, learning. From the cities of Redmond or Madras or Bend itself and some of the opportunities, I felt like more like cities than when. We've had it in other places like Portland or something like that.
Fact, sorry to interrupt, but if our pool committee members are going through Madras there, there is a great, uh. That Carl and I stopped there, it's a great opportunity, you should try to arrange something.
And I did, I stopped on the way back to see it, and I was like, wow, we're, you know, so anyways, there's that going on there, and so. Want to make sure we coordinate with Jeff ahead of time, because they go quickly and the rooms go quickly, um, on where they open up, so.
Yeah, reach out to me if you'd like to.
Yeah.
Some assistance.
I highly, I highly recommend, it's one of the better things, uh, especially for new counselors, is getting to connect with. Others around, and the show, the hundred tenth anniversary week or day, I just want to make sure what days.
Twenty, yeah, so, you're right.
I, I have it right here in front of me.
Fourteen to the twenty.
Same day as the Hood Coast, yeah.
So Hood Coast should be coming through town on the twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh and I said, so if there was any fireworks, it's gonna go in and out of the high school, the whole place is gonna be a mess on that day like every year, so.
So don't.
We should do Lake Six and as we run into a high school, the fireworks go. Come on!
Oh, you stand when you think of that, uh, I like it though, but. Maybe the wrong ten minute hour, but anyway, just to be aware of, uh, of, uh, of that, because that's something that, uh. It would be madhouse, but anyways, that's all I have. Oh, and I had a question about yesterday, uh, was it yesterday? The days are getting away from me, came back home from vacation, turned on to Langasand and right there across the street, the whole road was blocked off. And there was doing, uh, something which was a holiday. Right, yesterday was holiday for the city and there were city trucks going by my house, so. Like you didn't know this was going on, but they blocked out, what, what's that road there by the post office?
McCormick?
McCormick. Wolf, I should know this, right? Uh, right there.
Wolf goes up and down, McCormick goes across.
Yeah, uh, down, they, they blocked the entire road off, uh, because it looked like they were digging up the sewer. Yeah, down, they, they blocked the entire road off, because it looked like they were digging at the sewer.
Could be.
Oh, that's the ADA stuff that's going on, I'm sure.
This was all. Dump trucks and stuff, and then they came up and went down to Barco to get to the. Well, that's what I saw Lisa, I was like, man. But I didn't know what catastrophe we had that brought them out, like a broken water main or a sewer.
They've been working on that for.
Yeah, it wasn't the contrary.
This was the city.
People on the service must respond, so that's been something like that, I don't know, I'll find out.
And their nineteen seventy-eight dump truck that was going down that way. If you laugh, you know what I'm talking about. So, but anyways, just so we aren't aware of what was going on yesterday, because.
Wasn't that enough immediately called, so I like those.
Okay, well, they did totally block off the.
I guess it was water.
Okay, I just was curious for that information, that's all. Okay, thank you.
All right, Transit Committee, I participated in that, I mean, it's great, I mean, Andy's just driving it, you know. They, she is looking at converting in old, converting a transit bus to electrify it. Which is gonna be a lot less expensive than buying a brand new electric bus, so, I mean, I see Andy though, she's.
One of the ones we have spare in the.
I can't recall, to be honest, but I, I feel like we're buying it. I don't think it's part of our current fleet. C four, we are the first one, so, you know, they, we passed the vehicle registration fee. And then everybody stops registering their vehicles, right, and renewing their vehicle. So those funds are a little, coming in a little slowly, and so it's changing the timeline of a lot of the projects as a result. That said, we're the number, we're the first community getting our project funded and happening, which is very exciting out of it. It's the, the shoulders on three sixty-second at the Scoggin, and it's breaking ground in twenty twenty-three is where we're at on, on the schedule. So not, you know, the fastest in the world, but you know what, I see some guys laughing at me, that's been part of a sidewalk pedestrian sidewalk project. For quite some time, you guys, so.
Yeah.
We're, next item, obviously we're open, we're here in person. Rich gave an update on the chamber, they're hosting their events. I went to their first Reach event. That was kind of with ribbon cutting of our first outdoor structure out at Rias, which was great. We have our hundred and tenth anniversary coming up, lots of, the chambers doing their deal in September, so lots of opportunity for us to get out and. And be seen in the community, lots of fun. Fourteen point seven million out of the legislature, which is very, very exciting. I just want to thank Representative Anna Williams, Senator Chuck Thompson, and, and of course, members of our team and staff. Who worked very hard with those folks to put together the right kind of proposal that, to get us these funds, and it's exciting. I mean, a lot of it's sucked into inflation, but you know, it's, it's a very exciting deal to get out of the legislature. And I think all of us can stand a little proud with, you know, what we have faced with wastewater, where we have come. Where we have kind of innovated with where we're going with the wetlands project and all that. And then, you know, with our WFI finance too as well. So I think we can all feel pretty good with where we are, we have continued challenges, but pretty exciting.
That's a grant, right, it'll pay back.
No payback.
So I think that's the, Mike is the historian, that's the largest grant the city's ever received, I believe.
Good times.
Because of inflation is the biggest one, but.
That, that takes me to my next topic. We had our new lobby firm out here, which hopefully, you know, helps us with some of these asks in the future. It was a great tour. Thank you for our staff, our team for putting that together. I think that was just, they commented, we were walking around, you know, we went out to the site there by the old Roseland and just, they could feel it, see it. And that helps with their presentations and their advocacy. And I think just a lot of light bulbs going on in our heads as we're talking to them. And their, their understanding of the different funds and how it interacts with the politics, I think it just puts us off on the right footing. Honestly, I wish we maybe stepped forward to do this a couple of years ago. So really excited about how that meeting went. Hundred tenth anniversary, I mentioned fireworks. So the, the one thing I, I just want to say about fireworks is. I'm proud of our community of Sandy. You know, we, I thought back to the Christmas tree lighting. Where everybody's used to going out to the Christmas tree lighting and doing the songs, and everybody knew we were lighting that tree. Everybody knew what time we were lighting that tree, and they could have all come out and jam packed in the Centennial Plaza for that, and yet they didn't. And people that were there wore their masks, they lined up in their cars, they went through and they participated in that program. And that just brings me to fireworks, right, where we had the, sure, we had the permit pulled, but we trusted our, our neighbors here in Sandy to do the right thing. We didn't ban fireworks. Our city staff worked really hard on an education campaign. We got a lot of the word out on hosing down, not using illegal fireworks, and from appearances, it went very good. At once, we didn't have any fires, right? We didn't have that many calls that came into the system. So I just want to say I'm, I'm proud of how we react as a community of bad apples and every community that are gonna break the rules. But Sandy's a pretty special place, and I think that our fireworks, July fourth, really demonstrated that. So thank you for everybody for, for that. And then just on a final note, Jeremy mentioned that the LOC conference is awesome. And it's a great opportunity for us to improve ourselves as counselors, but also to work as a team. And to go to the different sessions and then, you know, maybe have a cold drink at night, talk about what we learned and, and different ideas that we have. And the last time we went over to the community of Redmond and, and visited their city hall, which was an old grade school that was converted into a public building. And they have their own recreation district, you know, that they use to fund the pool. We walked around Madras, and then, you know, there were things on wastewater where we sat through, I think Jeremy sat through one with me with. The community of Sweet Home, and the issues that they were going, and how that went into a seven million dollar ask, and, and how we needed to develop to do an ask. And so I just, I want to say, we, we should all work to get it on our calendars and to find time and show up. And the one thing I would like to say to our team members with our staff is, is. Jordan, I, I would like you to consider maybe sending a couple key team members to, to the conference this year. One of Jeremy's pet peeves, which has become one of my pet peeves, is you go to these conferences, you throw around exciting ideas, you're energized. You get back home, you're ready to implement, and you've left your team behind, because they weren't part of that process in those meetings with you. And so if we do reach out to communities and we're meeting on the pool, let's get some of the folks that'd be involved in that project on a staff level, or whatever it might be, let's think through that. But, yeah, big fan of the LOC conference and hope everybody can attend. With that, let's get out of here before eight thirty.
Well.
I'll go ahead and close our city council meeting.